You were ready there with the answer. However, I do want to address the supervisors. When you ask questions of your staff, you don't ask questions of your staff. You interrogate them. And maybe that's why you need to keep replacing staff. Okay? But thank you.
The next speaker is Sarah Elphentrotos.
Elphentrotos.
I'm sorry.
Good afternoon.
Hi. Would you, would you please help us with your name for the record and, and give us your address?
Certainly. My name is Sarah Elphentrotos. I'm at 12844 Stone Tower Loop.
I got the Sarah, but the rest of it I can't... Would you expel it for me, please?
Yes, sir. It's E.L.E.F. as in Frank, T.H.E.R.A.T.O.S. as in Sam.
I thank you.
You're welcome. So, I was hoping to speak with you guys about water bill issue that my husband and I had. We were still newer to the Gateway community. We moved in this fall, really been enjoying it. I'm marine scientist. My husband works down at Gateway, so we're very involved in the community. Also, we're very conscious of our water usage because of that. It's an issue that's near and dear to my heart, so we try to be pretty stringent with it. We had a number of guests at our home for my husband's graduation from FGCU in December. We are in a three and a half bathroom home. Our half bath is out on the lanai. So, when we had a full house, one of our guests had gone out to use the lanai restroom and had not turned off the water supply to the toilet. So, we had no idea. Apparently, it's been running since that time. So, we were notified of the 12,000 gallon forgiveness policy, which is awesome. We're very glad that you guys do offer that. But it's definitely a very sizable difference in the bill. Typically, my husband and I have around $100 a month for the two of us. Sorry, per water bill, not just per month. And it is nearer to 2,000. So, it just seems like there's some sort of kind of disparity between what's allotted as an understanding of toilet flow issues versus when that reality kind of comes to fruition. So, I just kind of wanted to present it to you all. Again, we know that our household has used the water, but it just, again, it seems like there's some disparity. Wasn't sure if there's anything else that we're able to do to rectify the situation.
Would you, would you stand at the podium and answer any questions that may be asked by members? You've talked to the administration and, and they have made an adjustment on your bill. Do I understand that correctly?
They have given us the paperwork. They said that we need to meet, I think, it's the A, B, or C criteria and get it submitted, but there is a delay that it wouldn't be processed before the bill is due to be paid. So, like I said, we just discussed it on the phone with them about how that procedure works. But she said maximum amount is 12,000 gallons, which is kind of nowhere near what it's been since it had been running for a month without our knowledge.
You're telling me that a running toilet did not make a lot of racket, used more than 12,000 gallons in, in one month?
Correct.
During the two months of, of the two months? We, we bill bimonthly?
Yes, sir. So, it's, it's out on our lanai. It's been cooler. We haven't been out on the lanai. We always just keep the water supply off for that room. So, whoever had used it of our guests, because they were able to show us the date that the usage had begun, that person had turned it on to use the toilet and had not turned it back off.
I understand that. I, I was a little surprised at the gallon that you quoted. Scott, would you, would you have some conversation with this lady after the meeting, please? Thank you very much.
May I?
Please?
Ask a question. How many gallons are involved in this altogether?
Altogether, it is... Give me just a second here. So, it's showing that we have a usage of 157,280.
Mr. Chairman, we're not going to be able to address this today, but here's what I'd like to do going forward. We, we had a lady come here a couple of months ago who had in excess of that due to a leak, due to tree roots. And then we have you. And I, and I know this board and, and previous boards have wrestled with this and come out with the best policy they can. But I, I certainly think, Cal, going forward, when we get an appropriate slot, I'd like to review this policy and just see whether it's still fair, because I think there is the issue of charging for, charging for wastewater in this situation, certainly in the case of the leak. And I'm not sure that's totally fair. And, and I'd like, we can't answer you today, but I'd like to have that discussion at board level and review this policy.
Okay. Thank you.
Without any promises.
Understandable.
I think that's very appropriate, that with the understanding that we did some significant wrestling with it a year and a half ago. But if we're going to be completely understanding and objective, we need to know what kind of over-usage there has been with our residents in the last, since we adopted that policy, if that's possible. Don't you think that's appropriate that we know that?
I, I think so. We've got to gather the facts. We need to look at the, the way in which, the, the relevance of charging for wastewater in these situations, and also whether we might be applying the very lowest portable water rate, which is how the city and the county look at it. And I, and those are the issues that I think we need to address.
Scott.
Did you have something, Gary?
Recently, though, we had, we're a city of Fort Myers. We recently had a landscape person who left our homes on to the tune of about $180. And I went to the city of Fort Myers. I paid $180.
I've had similar.
Thank you. If I may, just, just for clarif- I'm sorry, Mrs. G-.
It's okay.
Just clarification. I understand that a bill has not yet been rendered to them for this, and that was her concern, that she wanted to try to get it resolved before the bill. Are you concerned about a cutoff in the thing of our service if it's not paid? I think is that part of your concern?
That's part of it, yeah. And just the, again, very sizable difference between what's, we've generally budgeted for versus the current bill.
Mr. Chairman, if appropriate, I guess from a staff perspective, the board's okay with, if the bill comes out and it's not paid and she's filed the paperwork to request relief, that service not be discontinued until that request is resolved.
I think that's very appropriate. Any objections to that? Cal, can you see that that's handled?
Can we let Scott go first?
If that's the issue.
Wanted to say something.
Hi. Scott Conlon, I just, again, Tony addressed one of my, one of my questions and concerns is that there's still an out, there's an outstanding balance due, and we just issued the bills January 15th, and they're due February 1st. And because we don't have the policy resolved yet, you know, what do, what do we do in this case? And you're saying, hold it or, or what, pay a portion of it or until the policy? I need some clear direction.
Well, I think we do have policy.
We, we do have policy, and that's what has been addressed.
And I, I think basically what we're saying is we will give you time to pay your balance. We won't cut you off. That's the direction we'd like to give at this point. But we do have a policy in place. And there had been maybe in the last year, I think, there was a lady a couple of weeks ago that had a problem, and there was a, a man a few months ago that had a pretty large, a $4,000 bill. And unfortunately, there's a policy in place. So, we'll work with you to see that you, you know, keep your services.
But also, please understand that we will still have to pay Lee County for that volume of water. Yes?
We understand that. But just don't cut off, don't cut off the service until we get this.
We'll work it out over time in 90 days or...
Just, just on the question of Lee County, you probably already know that Lee County put a cap of 9,000 gallons for sewer, for wastewater, regardless of how much portable water has been used. They cap it at 9,000, and these are the situations where that would actually be beneficial if we adopted the same policy.
Yes. Yes, but we still have our bulk water consumption from that, that we have to pay as a dis-.
But they are giving us a 10% break on that, as you know, which is the whole reason for the 1.4 mil in the event of leakage.
Mm-hmm.
Like this.
Or in, within the system and flushing and all those other things.
Yeah, I guess, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, I think that's, as Scott's trying to get, if the board's saying that staff, don't cut off the water. Give her time to file her re, formal request until all the blanks. And have the staff review whether or not relief should be provided. And abate any penalties, I guess, for a period of 30 days. Is that appropriate timeframe, Scott?
That's what, that's, that's what we've agreed to, yes.
Okay. All right.
Thank you. Sarah, please turn off the now, but the.
It is off.
It, it, this, this hurts us as much as it hurts you, almost as much as it hurts you.
Could I request that we put this on a future agenda item to discuss, please, to review this policy?
I think that's appropriate, Mr. Manager. When we don't have anything else, now that's not, that's not appropriate. Mr. Manager, would you see that this gets on a, on a very.
Late agenda.
Yeah.
Gary?
I put lock on my, my slide.
Really?
Thank you.
It'll cost me as much to get the plumber to put the lock on it.
No, you could have it at Home Depot. There, there are only a couple of lock.
Really?
Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. We have Mr. Ed Tinkle on management.
Got another one before I get into that. As a follow-up to your workshop, a couple of points. I thought the flow chart or the Manning tables, we call it from the military, that Rod put was dead right on of what I think that the CDD ought to be looking at. The only thing I saw that, and I don't think you can go back to the slides now, but if you go to the one that showed the management, the attorney, and the engineer, you had the arrow to the general manager. I think that arrow ought to also go to the board itself. So, because in other words, you're going to have access to the attorney. You're going to have access to the engineer, and you have access. I don't think you want that general manager having all that coming this way, and then you getting second-handed what the advice of the attorney was.
We're going to have a lot of conversation about that in the future. Thank you very much.
Second, second point was the pond section. I totally agree that the ponds and the wetlands be under the public works, but I would delineate out the storm sewers as a part of the utilities. The utilities totally, storm sewers are closer to be under the utilities than they are the pond and maintenance. Why, why the two, one collects the water to get it to the ponds and to the wetlands. There's a totally different situation there. They are utilities. The storm sewer system is a utility. And then the last one, Cal indicated that he had the ability to do this, so I would, I would suggest that he prepare for you guys, and I think you're going to need it, is have him prepare for each one of those three positions. The, what you were calling him, the utility manager, the administrative manager, and the public works manager, prepare, because I think you're going to need it, to prepare qualifications, is the duties, responsibilities, and authority of that person in that position, which really has you go back into each one of them and determine what's that person going to be doing to be able to write your qualifications. And then I'd ask, and Tony suggests I get ahold of Diane, but Cal, about 30 days ago, you passed out at a meeting and the public didn't get it, is a copy of the.
Job description.
Job description for the general manager. I'd like to get a copy of that.
Utility manager?
Utility manager, I'm sorry. Yeah. Okay, that's, that on that. Diane sent to you, I think yesterday afternoon, a copy of the report of the meeting that we had here with Aquagenics with George and his new guy that's the onsite manager for Gateway. Juan Soto, Elle, Molly, and myself had a real good discussion with George on what it's going to start taking to create a change order to his contract to start implementing the pond standards that we did. Had a, had a fantastic meeting, and you guys have it all in the, the meeting or in the, the report. One, any questions on that? I thought it was pretty straightforward on what, what we came up with. And Elle and Molly, and I believe those are the two that really should be doing it, are going to go out and do this inventory of the ponds. Been working with Scott. We're going to get the aerial photos. Go out, look at these ponds, all 59 of them. But we also recommended immediately getting started on a demo project, and that'd be ponds 85, 88, 89, and 114. Those seem to be, let's say, very highlighted ponds that get a lot of public scrutiny. Get those going immediately with like a demo project to see what Aquagenics can do in the way of getting those ponds in a position to be maintained on a monthly basis, on a monthly schedule. George made it clear, and I think everybody agreed, that going out and just, you don't turn a light switch and start littoral maintenance. There's some work to go on these ponds, especially some of those that have a lot of littorals around them, to get them in a position to where we're going to maintain them, which means going in and cutting and narrowing and all that stuff. Rod?
Does this mean tweaking our existing contract, or does it mean totally regutting it?
We went the tweaking route for the exa, for the reason that you've got nine months, and we didn't think that immediately going out, this, this is our thought, immediately going out and putting out a request for proposals for new pond maintenance. We weren't ready because we haven't had that inventory. So, the only answer was doing it through a contract amendment with Aquagenics. Putting together a request of qualifications or a request of work that we want done, specifications, have them come back and give us a price as to what it's going to cost to implement this for our 59 ponds for the next six months.
A contract amendment and more money. Is that what it's going to result?
No doubt about it. No doubt about it. Yeah. So, those were kind of the things that happened on that. Then we got into three side issues. One of those was the issue of fish barriers. We have talked and talked and talked. We've got a fish problem. Littoral eating fish, or fish eating littorals. One way we can get around that and try to limit that is we've identified seven ponds that feed into our flowway that where we could put fish barriers. So, I think that might be something that the district engineer might want to take a look at. In my opinion, I think all seven of them are, are very, very easy to adapt by building fish barriers and dropping those things right at the end of flowway structures. The two that we have in Gateway, a good one to look at is Pond 114 that feeds into Pond 116, I believe, right here down by the swimming pool. That fish barrier is setting right in front of the 72-inch opening. Be very easy to fabricate something like that and put it in there and attach it to the head wall and try to keep these fish. I'm not so worried about the fish from the upstream going downstream, because I don't think that's where our problem is. I think our problem is our fish are downstream. We don't want to go on upstream if we go out and start planting littorals upstream in all our ponds. So, try to limit the bad fish. Keep them in the flowway. Don't let them go downstream. We already have a fish barrier that protects us, and I imagine we'd be hearing complaints from Pelican Reserve if we didn't have it. We have a fish barrier that stops all the fish that are going into Pelican Reserve from Gateway. And that's down there at Pond 130. Now, that has a little bit of a asterisk with it. The backside of 130 that feeds Stony Brook and a part of Hampton Park, those feed in, but both of them go through channels that somewhat stop that fish from being able to get over into Pelican Reserve.
Do you remember when we did a fish barrier four, five years ago?
Yep. Yep, you did one over on the main flowway at 132.
It was a big deal.
Keep in mind, that was a 25-foot wide opening. We don't have anything near that. Most of our, our largest pipe, correct me, Danny, was four, four by eight, four by eight or a five by seven box. That's the biggest one we've got. So, the size of this bill wouldn't be anywhere near the size of those. Wouldn't be anywhere near the size of that. That one over there is humongous.
Doesn't the fish barrier stop fish going both ways?
Yeah. Yeah. The one over there that you built on the flowway.
I missed you. I thought you said you were concerned about fish going upstream.
No, I was saying without having it. I'm not worried about fish going that way. I'm worried about the fish going up into our ponds that we're going to try to renovate. Yeah. Unless we got any salmon that are going to jump the weir. The next item that we talked about was testing of the ponds.
Wait, wait, wait. We had.
Oh, no, I was just making a comment past the note.
I think it was great. This goes along with Rob's thing too, about having parks and trails.
In Pelican Marsh a number of years ago, some of the residents were complaining that they no longer had any certain birds in their lakes, because there were no fish in the lakes, because a family of otters came through.
We got that now.
And wiped out the fish.
We've got otters, but it's not that bad.
They need to eat more fish.
They ought to eat the basic fish and not the, the, the good fish. Eat it. Yeah. They aren't stupid. They're not eating that carbon.
Put that on the slide.
But they did. They wiped out the fish. Please continue, Ed.
The bass is caviar. The next item that we talked about is testing of the ponds. And again, this is a contractual agreement or issue with Aquagenics. We currently have an agreement with them or in their agreement right now that they annually take a test of all 59 of our ponds, and they do a whole bunch of different parameters, some of which to me are meaningless. But anyway, they, they've done it that way. But one of the things that we've been talking to Ernesto on and Cory, that was, Carrie that was down from the firm in North Carolina that I reported on at the last meeting, indicated the importance of starting to develop a background on these parameters, especially with the thought of your aeration facilities. What we're looking at doing is having Aquagen, or recommending that Aquagenics give us a contract for instead of doing those tests annually, do them at least quarterly for dissolved oxygen, biochemical oxygen demand, total phosphorus, total nitrogen, and ammonia. This testing would be done quarterly for those five or six items. And we start developing a history of what we've got so as to be able to use that in sizing aeration facilities.
Please stop.
Yes.
Didn't our new standard health for monthly checking of the water quality?
Long-term, I'd like to see that, but when you start talking to the dollars, I think we better see, see how nasty this pill taste of just getting the cost on quarterly. I think it's going to be an expensive proposition.
Then we need to amend the standards.
Yeah. We, we might have to. But I, I don't have the data, Rod, to know what Aquagenics is going to charge for that. Don't have that data, and I think we need to find out. Nothing else, ask Aquagenics, provide that information. What's these 59 ponds going to cost us to go from annual to quarterly? Keeping in mind that the annual will act as a quarterly, so you're really only adding three more tests. Three more.
Three more.
Three more times.
I think that's a very good point, and I think we should be quite relaxed about amending this on standards as we go forward. It's a work in progress.
It's a work in progress.
And money is important.
The last item, and this was a educational deal for everybody that was involved. And that's this issue of our entire bathymetrics. And I was probably one of the first to jump on the bandwagon heading south out of Dodge on what we should be doing on these bathymetric studies. Come to find out that the degree of accuracy, the degree of accuracy on these bathymetric studies isn't perhaps quite what we thought it was. We're finding that the GPS equipment that's attached or comes with this equipment that does this work has a plus or minus up to 40 feet variation. So, when we're out there doing this work, and whether this be Jeff's company that's doing the work or has done the work for us to date, or whether it be George's firm, Aquagenics, or whether we go buy that equipment that I talked about at the last meeting from that CI bio base, all of it has a plus or minus associated with it. So, when you're going out, the hard surface, I'm not that concerned about, because you can tie the hard surface back to the shorelines. That's pretty easy to do. But when they're going out and doing that 40-meter loop up and down the ponds, and they hit, for example, George's firm, Jeff's firms can't even do this, and they hit a sediment three feet thick, 36 inches. It was my opinion that that, or my understanding, that that 36 inches X marked the spot, and I could go back out on the boat later with a sludge judge and hit that point dead nuts and get a sludge judge 36 inches tall. That's not necessarily the case. It's a plus or minus. That 36 inches could be, depth could be 10 feet to the side of the boat, 10 feet in front of the boat, 10 feet in the back of the boat, 10 feet in front of the boat, whatever. So, while we're getting information that is accurate relative to the sludge or the silt accumulation, or whatever the stuff is on the bottom, it isn't necessarily exactly where it's showing up on there. So, if you go back to X marks the spot and go down, you may or you may not hit it, which introduces kind of a hit and miss. Well, what brought all this up to, to reality was you all had delivered by Jeff a bathymetric for, and I believe you all have a copy of this, for Pond 83, which is Magnolia Lakes. One thing led to another on this for me, and that was this pond, if you look at the design of this pond, it's got a four-to-one slope out to the six-foot depth, which would mean 24 feet. Then it drops down two-to-one to 20-foot depth, and then it's flat over for about 100 feet. If you look at this, it's predominantly 10 to 12 foot deep. Now, that either implies one of two things. Magnolia Lake has one heck of a lot of sediment, or it wasn't built to 20 feet. And I think we need to know which one of those are. And I suppose there's even a possibility of a third one. Was the data correct? Because Jeff's equipment does not show sediment thickness, one of the things that I suggested, and pretty much the members agreed with me, is we got a quote from, or asked for a quote from Aquagenics, who has the equipment to do the sediment thicknesses. Have them go out and essentially give us a second opinion on Pond 83. We're looking at a cost of about $825, and I believe staff has a copy of the actual proposal from Aquagenics to do it. But at this point in time, it seems to me it would be real nice to go out with more sophisticated equipment. Still has that degree of error, but it would give us those sediment readings that Jeff's equipment does not have the capability of doing. And also any vegetation that's on the bom, bottom, his equipment, George has the ability to do that. Right now, I would be using it for one thing and one thing only, just to document that what we have gotten from Jeff is correct. Because if it is indeed correct, and we have some real issues, then about that, the way that pond was built. Now, Danny came in, and Scott has also said the same thing to me, and it, it stands to reason, but I think it begs the question of both Beazer, the original developer, and Banks, the engineer, is a lot of times when they're building these things, they'll have a design, but they'll make a depth greater than what it needs to be, for one thing, and that's to generate fill. Fill's expensive around here, so they get more fill. It could have been that their basis of doing this was they got down and they had enough fill and they didn't need to go to 20 feet. That's one argument. I would think that that would be somewhere in the documents on the permit, because the other side of it is when you're doing the calculations for a design like this, you take a design storm event, you figure out how much water it is, and you have to store it. Well, if that calculation said you have to have 20 feet and you only went to 10 feet or 12 feet, what happens? How's it work? In other words, it's a non-compliance. I think an easy thing to do to get the answer to that is just somebody make, and maybe Danny would be the one to do it, is contact Banks and say, hey, we've ran into this bathymetric study here, and it's not what the design plans for Magnolia Lakes golf are. Can you explain? And it might, might be just as simple as just what Danny and Scott have said. They got down to the depth. They didn't need it. They amended the permit, and everything's hunky-dory. Off on the other hand, it has six or eight feet of sediment material. That's a whole different ballgame. And so, our recommendation was let's eliminate any doubts about the correctness of Jeff's work. For $825, let George go out and do the other pond. We're going to have the benefit that we're going to get some additional information. We're going to find out that sediment information. And then proceed, knowing going forward that the data that we're getting for not only Pond 83, but the six that you've already authorized is correct.
If I may, just want to ask you and get to the, what matters to me out of what you said is the dollars. So, I've always had as a rule of thumb, we've, we've been over this many times, that Jeff. So I've always had as a rule of thumb, we've been over this many times, the Jeff Key situation. There was an interest in giving him all of our ponds, then we finished up giving him six. And I've said consistently that we need to make sure we're doing something useful with the data before we give him the rest. And I think Jeff Key and his organization are terrific.
Yeah.
I've watched him present, I've talked to the guy. However, you're throwing a question mark over the accuracy of his data, I think. And I've always had as a, I've always had as a rule of thumb that he charges around seven hundred bucks per pond on average.
Seventy-five per acre, and George gave us a price of a hundred and thirty-seven fifty.
Per acre?
Per acre.
Okay.
And that has six acres, so.
Okay, so we've got four hundred acres of ponds in Gateway, so a hundred ponds, that's four acres per pond.
Five hundred acres, yeah.
Four hundred and fifteen I've got from Tetra Tech.
Okay. Thought somebody at the last meeting may have, whatever, yeah.
Whatever. Let's say it's five acres per pond, Ed. What would that cost us then? Let's say for the North Carolina option. Is that what, you're giving us more option than just the Jeff Key one?
Not ready to answer that, Rod, right now, because this whole thing, there was monkey wrench thrown into it when I found out about this accuracy issue. That equipment that CI BioBase has has got the same fluctuation. Kerry, I called him, he said, I said, what, you didn't bring that up, and it was sort of like you didn't ask? I don't like that. But anyway, it is, and it does. It has that same plus or minus. My thing is right now, let's find out what Aquagenics says about this, and then determine to what extent this is gonna be before we go on. But if we're going to have to go and look at a hundred and thirty-seven fifty, and if George gave me a legitimate price, a hundred and thirty-seven fifty an acre, and he didn't give you a discount just to do this one.
Right.
That's essentially double of what Jeff is giving us. Now all of a sudden, we're up to, what, four hundred times a hundred and thirty-seven fifty, eighty thousand bucks? And doing all of our ponds?
It all depends whether the data is useful.
That's my point. And I'm not ready to do that until this trial balloon is done on eighty-three. If his information comes back from eighty-three that backs up what Jeff has done, then we've got the question is what is the real benefit of having that sedimentation capability? Jeff's idea, and he doesn't hide anything about it, he's very, very straightforward. Since he does not have the ability to pick up with his current equipment, he's talking about buying new, but with the current equipment that he's used so far, he doesn't have the ability to pick up that sediment layer. So the way he's doing it on the cor- because I asked him, I said, okay, how are you doing the corrings? If you don't know where the sediment's at, how do you go out and do it? Well, he does it based on basically a standard statistical method deviation. He goes out and figures out how many he needs to take to have a curve that's gonna hit this thing dead nuts. Well, for Magnolia Lake, he did eighteen. And I said, what happens when you come back with the eighteen? We overlay that on the one that has the sediment, and it doesn't hit, or worse, not even close. You say there's two inches, and they're showing it's four feet. Where are we on the standard deviation?
So you're doing a pilot with the new.
We're doing a pilot essentially with Pond eighty-three. That's exactly right. And finding out where we're at. I'm hoping it comes back that everything that Jeff had done is right. And then the only risk we got then is that where he takes his eighteen, or where he has taken his eighteen samples are representative. And the only thing we'll know on that is when we get the data. So our recommendation was to authorize this work.
What's that?
Our recommendation was to authorize this.
One pond?
One pond, eighty-three, to the tune of eight hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Yes, it's okay.
Are you gonna, that emotion that you will?
I'll make the motion. Do you need a motion?
I don't think so. I thought it might be something the operation manager, but I didn't wanna get in the middle of that.
How about a motion to get her down?
Yes. Will you second?
Do we need that?
No.
Then we said we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna do it, go get it done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would you bring Cindy in?
Yes.
Do we have any other folks?
Nope.
All right. Just hold on for just a second, ladies and gentlemen. I've asked the manager to bring in Cindy Klein, our new employee on utility billing. I think you have a chance to say hi.
Come through over here.
Well. There she is. Come in, Cindy.
Hello.
Greetings, everybody.
Hi, this is Cindy Klein, our utility billing.
I'm the new utility billing manager for the community.
When everything is going perfectly in the future on utility billing, you'll know who to blame.
Is it Cindy or Cynthia?
It's Cindy.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Cindy's already got through her first utility change, implemented it well.
Rate change, yeah.
Rate change.
System's ready to go. Anything after January the twelfth, so.
Feet are wet?
Feet are wet.
Thank you very much for coming in to say hi.
My pleasure.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. This would bring us to.
Are we ready for three?
Yes, we're ready for three A.
I'm ready for a log on the fireplace. We can afford it. Turn up the heat.
Yeah. Reach behind you, would you? Scott, give us a degree or two, please. There we go. Thank you. We have for discussion an item on the Fairway Lakes Office Park lighting. Is that so, Mr. Operations Manager?
Yep, Scott Connell. What we have before you is a discussion item, and it was brought up back on December seventeenth with Mr. Tinkle. It appears that the building for the lights has been going to Gateway Greens Community Association for several years. And there are sixteen actual light fixtures, fourteen poles, two of them are double-headed. So Ed brought it up, and after some additional investigation and checking with FPL, yes, obviously they've been getting the bill. They've been paying it for, I don't know how many years. But what I have with, in the booklet as a backup, some things I found on the file, not only what the current billing is with FPL, but there's a layout of the Fairways, Fairway Lakes Office Park that shows where the poles are. This came from a logbook that we have here in the office. And addition to that, the second page is a detailed sheet of an inventory with all the pole numbers. And I personally went out and verified every one of those. And so from what I can see, back in two thousand and three, and the documents that are created in the logbook and the inventory, it coincides with all the rest of the district street lighting program. How and why that happened several years ago can't be explained by myself or Ed, I don't think, because we've talked about it. But in the interim, we've gone out and found out that FPL is still serving those poles in the way of providing power. We found that there is a bad fuse in the disconnect. We have replaced the fuse. We've got the lights up and running currently. There are still some fixtures that are damaged that need replacement. I haven't authorized that, I've asked for a quote. The history is that that, as we've talked about in the past couple of years, that office park did have a property owner association, and that currently, or hasn't been for some time, active. I was in touch with one of the property management companies who has up in that corner, thank you, Cal, with the little hand where it says Fairway, there's seven buildings up there. And I asked them, I said, well, is there any interest in maybe you spearheading, getting with the other property owners, and creating a new overall property owner association? I haven't heard anything back in the last thirty days on that request. So therefore.
What's that tell you?
Run, no.
It's like a hot potato.
So I think what I found, and maybe some of you have more history here than I, was this part of it, you know, originally, and speaking with Terry Hanlon, we sort of theorized that at one time, this development park was created by Westinghouse along with Hampton Greens and a lot of the other area, and they just lumped it all together with turnover. And they were paying the bills, and they just, one carried on with the other. We don't know. I've asked FPL to double track to the origin of it, and still waiting on that. Again, they've asked permission for us to sign this agreement for the sixteen lights and take it over on our billing to get it off the Hampton Park, Hampton Greens.
We found out FPL has in Gateway Greens, we have two hundred and three lights, of which sixteen are those. Some of the lights belong to our HOA, and we only pay for power, and that has a separate billing rate. Other lights belong to them, seventy-five, that we pay not only for power, but we pay a hefty monthly price per pole for maintenance. Those, I'm trying to figure out where they fall, because if they're maintenance of the CDD, then the CDD will have to fix them, because there's some issues up there that have to be done. But if we've been paying a maintenance for them, which is tough to figure out, their billing, then they have a responsibility to fix them. But I didn't know if your paper trail showed you who is responsible for maintaining those lights, because there's a big difference in cost. Big difference.
I can't give you an exact answer, but it's my understanding that we're paying for the energy only, and then we, the district does the maintenance.
Your records just went back to two thousand and three.
Correct. I believe they were installed by the developer and inherited by the district, if that's the right term.
Inherited by the district as approved to the POA?
As turnover?
Yeah.
That's my assumption. I can't, I don't have documentation on that.
Yeah, if I could, back in, I'm gonna dust off a memo from February of two thousand and fifteen on this, when this issue came up about the roadway track, not the, not the streetlights. And there was a deed from the former WCI entities to the Fairway Lakes Property Owners Office, Property Owners Association, prior to dissolution of the Property Owners Association. However, that deed had improper legal description, you know, of a minor, of a nature. And then the association was dissolved effective February, certificate dissolution, February eighteenth, two thousand and ten. And at the time of the dissolution, there was one individual left as an officer of the entity, a guy named Brian DeWor, the Knack. And I don't know if he is still around, he can sign on behalf of the dissolved entity a bill of sale or a quick deed, or whatever instrument the district believes appropriate, the district wants to acquire ownership of those lights.
Why would we want these lights? Why don't we just turn them off?
If the district, if the district didn't pay for them initially, if the district doesn't have an agreement with FPL to lease them, that's the question, I guess. I think that's what Mr. Tinkle was talking about. FPL has two programs. One, you install the lights, and then you just pay for the power, and then you maintain them, or you lease the lights from FPL, and they pay for the maintenance, and you also pay for the power, and you pay your lease payments.
These lights are very similar to the ones in Gateway Greens. Again, Gateway Greens, you guys, CDD, and we were one of the first developments here. Gateway Greens Drive within Gateway Greens HOA are your lights and your power. Same thing on Westlake. So my guess would be you're gonna find that that POA didn't have anything. The lights were the CDD's, like Scott said. Where the screw-up came was the billing procedure, and it just got sent over our way, probably because it was all under one hat, Westinghouse. That's my guess. So I think those lights probably are your lights, just like the ones in Gateway Greens Drive.
I think they're your lights. Works for me.
I'm gonna sit down before I say something.
The lights, the lights of the other area that we took over, they're landscaping, et cetera. Who owns those lights?
You're talking about Town Lake Drive, Commerce Lakes, Devonshire Lakes? I believe the district does.
Do we?
And I believe the districts are therefore.
I know he believes.
Yes.
But I wanna know, is it true?
As Mr. Tinkle mentioned, Town Lakes doesn't have any lights. There's a couple of lights on the minor roads, if you will, going to Devonshire, Girl Scout. There's a couple roadway lights on those roadways that the district made.
Those I can understand. What I would.
I apologize.
What I would call public roads, so to speak.
Collector's streets, yeah, collector's room, yeah.
When you start getting into this office park, that's theirs, if you will. And I know that we did some other stuff like landscaping for them, and that type of thing back in Pete Doris era. And he wanted us to try to boost them a bit. But yet, that's their business. That's their. And at least if we're not collecting the electrical costs and/or even the maintenance costs, I think, you know, if it was up north, they'd be paying for the snow plowing and yada, 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 you know? Triple net lease, if you will.
Well, I have, I have just a slightly different view on it. I think that's Devonshire Lakes Drive, for example, that's a dead end. It's servicing the, what used to be the bank and the other businesses that are in there. And you can equally make the argument that they should be billed for some of the costs for those lights.
I could.
You could. And I think for the administration involved in trying to, in the absence of a POA, and I'm not sure they'll be very excited about reforming the POA. In the absence of a POA, I think the question of ownership should be fairly simple. I think the district should own them for the, what it's. But, but in this particular instance that you're bringing up in this, on the agenda item, we're talking about paying five hundred, is it five hundred and fifty bucks a year that the HOA is paying instead of the district? And I just wanna know how many years that's been going on? What's the dollars, what's the dollars involved?
I don't know how long it's been going on.
Do you know, Ed? Do you know how long the GGCA has been paying this bill?
No.
Like ten years, five years?
And FPL records are horrible.
Well, unless we know, we can make a deal.
Well, also, what's the average cost?
Right.
I think you're out of that. I think you, I think you guys are out of that. The issue of us with the FPL is between us and FPL. FPL tried to throw you guys in the middle and told us to collect the money back, and I said, we didn't pay it to the CDD. We paid it to you. It's your mistake. I'm waiting on a phone call, and I hope I haven't, after three weeks
After thirty.
From FPL of, somebody there is trying to cover their you-know-what, because somebody screwed up on this. It's a wrong billing.
From an angle where you're trying to, you're making a claim on the district for the years that you've been paying instead of us.
No, we're going after FPL. We are not gonna touch the CDD.
I need to understand that.
Yeah. The only thing you guys need to do is to, as I indicated, Scott, is just verify this maintenance provision. Because if you can get it at three forty-five, I was gonna bring that, and I forgot the thing. I'll bring you a copy of our bill of what we're paying for those lights. Just make sure that you're paying for the sodium vapor lights, and I don't think the cost is three dollars. I thought it was less than that, if it's just you have the, what do you call it, maintenance requirement.
Are we talking about, are we talking about three dollars?
Two dollars and eighty-seven cents per light.
Per month.
Per month. And we do the maintenance.
Yeah.
It seems like an awful lot of conversation for a little bit.
The five hundred dollars is, to me, a reasonable thing.
No one's discussing the cost of maintenance, though. But what's good? Going, how much?
But if that's already yours, it was yours to begin with. That's, that was my point here.
Well.
Because you've got another one just like it.
This is a segue, though. This is a segue to the fact of what is an average cost to maintain a pole? We should know that.
They charge you about seven dollars a month. And you don't spend anywhere near that.
But does that include the fact that if a bulb burns out, et cetera, they do that type of stuff? Okay, stand by with that. What's our cost with ramamadingle lighting? What do we pay them?
Well, I would have to go back and look at the number of lights.
Just a wild guess.
Well, I don't wanna say thirty days and get in trouble like Danny. I'm sorry. I don't know what our budget is. If you give me a few minutes during the meeting, I'll try to look at.
All right, then, while you're doing that, we seem to constantly utilize this one source as our lighting source. Is there nobody out there that can give us a competitive bid cost?
There are, and we're reaching out to them.
I think, I think we need to do that ASAP.
We use the competitor. You guys got it made.
No, 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 wait a while. You're telling me that there's only one?
Wait a minute. No, 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 wait a minute. You're telling me that there's only one competitor that you know?
No, we're using Young's Electric and they've been with us for years and it's pulling teeth. I've seen what happens in Gateway where you have your lights, phone call to Terry the next day or the day after that, Bentley is out doing their job. I will say you guys, now I don't know what you pay, but you've got one heck of a good vendor.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just two points, if I may. I guess Scott, from the perspective in the memorandum, you referenced that from maps and a logbook developed by Johnson and Jurey and staff in two thousand and three and two thousand and ten, it appears these, that the intent was that these streetlight poles and fixtures were the responsibility of the district. What kind of logbooks and maps? I'm just curious.
They're attached.
I saw the map and the logbook is this, like an inventory sheet, is that?
That was part of the documents?
Yes. Do you know how that was generated or did you find out how that was generated? I'm just curious, if that's an addition of ownership or part of the district?
I'll check that out.
And, and I guess secondly, if it's seven dollars a pole per month and if FPL maintains those, I'm, it may be better from a liability perspective. The light goes out and it's out for a period of time and if an accident occurs, I mean, that's, if that's the cost, is it seven dollars per month per pole and they maintain it?
Sure. I don't have a quote.
It depends upon the height of the pole and the type of fixture, so it could be.
I still think, I think the, as Tony's suggesting here, the question of ownership needs, does need to be clarified, but the question, but the other idea of recharging out the cost for seven times tw, seven times fourteen poles, which is a hundred bucks a month, I think it's convol, we've got a convoluted enough district as it is without getting into charging individual commercial property owners in the absence of the POA and I think it's pretty small potatoes. And I think we, I think the district should take responsibility for it.
On the other hand, why does somebody living in Stony Brook, Magnolia Lakes, Daniels Preserve, why are they contributing to that? Because essentially they are.
Well, you can make, you can make the same argument that we're lighting Commerce Lakes Drive East and there's a lot of businesses on that, a lot of business, business.
I have, I have.
How do we, to start to divviate up to individual business owners, it can be very complicated.
Well, we don't have to start. All we have to do is not, we don't have, we just don't have to take things unless we're absolutely certain that they, that they belong to us and our liability. If we just turned all these lakes lights off, if Fairway Lakes off as park, do you think maybe the businesses that are in there would say, uh-oh, maybe we ought to form an HO, a POA and.
Don't get, um, drive is the same thing. They do the same thing. They, you know, way that they have.
You're digressing.
Trying not to set a precedent.
Oh, I know what you're doing. I think you ought to keep paying for them, not give us your problem.
Sure. Well, that becomes, sure. Those Gateway Greens want to get on our side of having somebody to support? I bet you you do.
I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, possibly that Scott can, and I can get together, he can give me again the full documents that, that leads the staff to believe that the intent was to give them to the district. And if there need to be any remedial documents, bring those back to the board and the board can say yes, get the POA to convey them or no. We, you know, make sure the POA understands it's their responsibility and it's dissolved, but you all need to take care of it, that's.
Yeah, we've got, we've got other fish to fry this afternoon. Thank you for bringing this forward. That's it, yeah.
And with FPL, we've had an experience with them that going back even twenty years, the records are horrible, much less twenty-five or thirty years.
Okay, what do we, what do we have on Gateway Lake Restoration Program?
This is something you might want to table until you go through your organizational.
Tabled to a time certain, date certain, or tabled until it's pulled off the table? And put back on?
Are you serious? Do you want it?
Yeah, I, I think until you go through, we get a little farther in the reorganization thing.
Okay. Are you, you'll recommend that when you want it removed from the table then? Is that correct?
Put back on the table, yes.
I, I used the wrong term. I flipped it around, Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir.
I, I support tabling it. I mean, the, the big problem is the middle circle. That should not be Tetra Tech, it should be the district.
Yeah.
We're responsible for the budget, not Tetra Tech.
Motion to table's preferential motion. One second, as it has to be voted on immediately. Do we have a second to table? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried. Consent agenda approval of December seventeenth meeting minutes, maintenance inspection report, contract spreadsheet. Margaret's not here to help me, so I'm going to have to do this one. So.
It's tough work, though.
Before we entertain a motion, are there any items in the consent agenda four A, B, or C that like to have con, discussion on, please?
Four C.
Four C. Anyone else? Please proceed, Mr. Seager.
Thank you. Agenda page seventy-seven. And I'm sure this is just a typo. The top date in the top box should be ten fifteen, not one fifteen.
Okay.
It's, it's only a typo.
Speaking of which, I haven't seen any invoices for them and I haven't seen any reports. They were supposed to give us a monthly report.
Oh, yeah.
It's only a typo, no big deal. But, but Bill's bringing up another point as to the, we've had a discussion, Cal, or email and verbally about their bills and their timeline. Is everything now sorted?
It seems like it. They just need to send the bill to the right address.
Okay.
Have we gotten any kind of report from them of what they've done on our behalf?
Yes.
We have.
Yes. And I will.
You'll share it with us?
I will and that's in the supervisory comments.
Thank you. We'll go add a debt. Anything else on item four C?
Yes, one more item on page eighty-two. Scott, I'd like to ask a question on the mainscape annual amounts. And I was digging through the records when we, when we hired them in March or wherever it was, you know, we threw the bid out, then we came back and then we, the charging's eight hundred and ninety-three dollars for year one and then eight sixty-eight for the second, second consecutive years there, second and third. There's a difference of, what is it? Twenty-seven thousand. And from memory, this is to do with irrigation mapping. Was that the reason why the first year was much?
Yes, they had, they had the X summer days in the first year to do the irrigation asphalt.
Has that been done?
Yes. There's still a couple little questions that we still have and, and we're working through that, but it's ninety-nine percent complete.
So what does that tell us? What's that data going to show us now that we spent that money?
Well, it's already come in handy trying to track things out in the field and zones and things. So what we want to do is ta, we've already taken that information and transferred it to Dave Place to put it on the GIS, so we have another layer of information.
Does that mean we know where every irrigation zone and every irrigation head is? Is that where?
I won't say we know where every head is because that wasn't part of the assignment, but it was zones and which controllers they go to. So that'll take us in to the next step as we talked about a few months ago, where we want to upgrade our irrigation control system.
Right.
Which we, is out there to do. We, we put it on hold two months ago.
Yes, we did, the Southfield thing, yeah.
So this, they're going to dovetail and help assist going forward on the irrigation control system.
I'm sorry I interrupted you. The, the, the question that's related to this is, that was early in the agenda, which was Tetra Tech's report about the state of our utility system generally. And, you know, they did the sampling of ir, of portable irrigation sewer and were, and were giving their results that there were problems with our, a lot of our irrigation system. Is that, is the problems that Tetra Tech were finding, is that, is that laid at our door or is it mainscapes? To what extent are they responsible for maintaining this irrigation system that Tetra Tech were criticizing?
They're responsible for any what they call main line, anything four inches, four inch pipe or less. And anything greater than four inches is our system.
Oh, that's the.
And those valves, that's how it's divided.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items four A through C?
I have a motion to approve.
I have a motion, may I have a second? And I have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Pose. Four zero. Motion's carried. Five A, business items, Pelican Preserve Ponds Work Group. Looking for somebody from the Ponds Group.
This is, as you see, I had to get it in the book in time. There's a letter of agreement recommended by the Ponds Group to P-PAC and P-PAC did recommend it at their meeting last week on the fourteenth to enter into an agreement with GIS Solutions to do the specifics as laid out there for the Ponds Group, the work group. Essentially, we're taking all the information that Bob Geppert has gathered over the years and putting that into a, a database of the GIS. It'll be another layer and available and keep being, the living, breathing document keep updating as, as work goes on. And as, if you, if you look at page eighty-eight, it talks about the things that they're going to build into it. Basically, item B, which is on a base map, talking about how the drainage flows and drainage basins, aeration, all that new, we put in all those new aerators, they're up and running, where their fish gates go. And also the information on item D, which is the history, the cost, the service, bathymetrics, maintenance videos, drone photography. So all those are, are additional items that they want to build this database and keep it preserved through the GIS and, and they'll have that on all the ponds and ultimately they'll probably be adding preserve information when that gets transferred from WCI in the future. So the Ponds Group has recommended this to P-PAC. P-PAC heard it last week and now has recommended it for approval to come out of their, their budget line item as they brought forward to the board today.
Thank you. Questions on, for the attorney?
After the board members.
Of course.
But just two items. If they're handed out, proposed, it's an addendum to the agreement, which is a typical addendum for the contracts, which was on the prior GIS Solutions addendum. And secondly, I would suggest that in addition to the information that's referenced, that the GIS information also show all easements in favor of the district, drainage easements, access easements, lake maintenance easements.
Well, how, how can we make that happen unilaterally when we have a, a contract here that doesn't include that?
It says parcels including but unlimited to, so I guess we can ask him if that, if that's within the scope, make sure that's within the scope to put easements on it because that's very helpful. I've seen that in other GIS contracts, other companies.
Hold on just one second. John, you have anything to say about this?
No, I mean, I don't really concern with Tony's recommendation. I don't know. I'm not on the Ponds Group here.
I know. I'm unfair, but I just thought maybe you could. Are you recommending that we move to approve this and the addendum?
Yes, sir. And the addendum is, is a pretty cool form of addendum.
Right.
And then just to have a conversation with Mr. Guest to make sure that what's included will be easements and then make sure P-PAC is aware of that.
Thank you. I have a motion. Is there a second? I have a second. Any further conversation? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Four zero. Thank you very much. All right, staff reports. Staff reports. Wait a minute, what's this? Did we, Mr. Attorney, do you have things, do you have things?
Uh, just briefly, as we, as the, we went through and I went through and reviewed the document prepared by Tetra Tech and Scott for pre-qualifying contractors for the Lake Bank Restoration Program, I went back and reviewed, reviewed the district's rules and procedures dealing with competitive solicitation of work for maintenance projects. And the concept of pre-qualified vendors being the only vendors allowed to participate in certain projects wasn't incorporated. So what I would, what I'll be doing is, for the board's concurrence, is placing a notice in the paper of rule development to modify their rule of procedure, that's required under the Administrative Procedures Act. And then also advertising subsequent a proposed rule hearing date. And what I'll bring back at the next board meeting is a proposed language for the rule amendment to be advertised. But with the board's concurrence, I will at least put the first ad in the paper. It's very short, notice of rule development.
That's one of our rules, the two of them.
Yes, sir. That's right. The rules are procedure.
Hand this up.
What's that, Scott?
What were you, what were we talking about?
Oh, I don't know if the board needs to see all, because I don't see, I don't see ten pages of documents at the present time. But it's just, it's just a change to, because right now we have to competitively solicit, but the concept of pre-qualifying is to have a narrow range of people that we just say, you're pre-qualified, you're the only folks that are going to be notified and you're the only folks that can bid on these projects.
Right. Okay, are you, is that all for you?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Mr. District Engineer?
Good afternoon, everybody. For the record, my name's Tyler Wainwright. I'm with Tetra Tech. The item we have before you today is a recommendation for approval of construction plans and plat for a community called Pareto. This is in Pelican Preserve. It's at the very east end of Cypress Grove. So this is what will be between where the existing community of Mata Rita is right now, all the way to the east and it'll butt up against Gateway Boulevard. So that's where it's at.
Do you have an answer to the question I asked of you?
Yes, sir, I do. So you had asked me a question earlier about the dedication language and there was one item that is being dedicated to the Pelican Preserve Community Association and that is the drainage, not the drainage, I'm sorry, the irrigation. So that community will have a, a master meter for irrigation, so it won't be.
I'm, I'm sorry, there was some rattling and I didn't hear. Would you, would you help me by repeating that?
Yes, sir. So the question was, in the memo, there's some discussion about items being dedicated to the Pelican Preserve Community Association. And that is the irrigation system for that community. So that community will have a master meter for irrigation.
Now, what community?
Pareto.
Are you talking about the homeowners association for Pareto or an organization?
The way that dedication.
Pelican Preserve gave greater association.
The, the way that WCI shows the plat right now is, let me read the exact language.
It's the community association, which is the largest association.
Correct. It's the community association.
Is this the master association that we refer to?
Yes, sir.
Which is also known as WCI right now.
At the present time, that's correct. Yes, sir. And what I would suggest, Mr. Chairman, with the board's indulgence, is that I think a detailed presentation by Mr. Caldwell, who has accepted our invitation to be here today to explain what this plat involves because there are a number of issues involved. One is the reconfiguration of the flowway and water management areas. And then there's also additional issues concerning vacating portions of various easements. And so I think, David, if you could walk that through the board with whatever graphics you have, I think it'd be very helpful.
So to finish answering your question, sir, it's the irrigation system will be owned by the Pelican Preserve Community Association, the master.
Which at the moment is WCI.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Is that correct?
So entering that community, there'll be a master irrigation meter. Everything past that point won't be gateways or the individual homeowners, it would be the master.
And, and, and another layer of complexity, if you ask me, but nobody has.
And the streets and the sidewalks are whoms?
That's what we'll explain. And David will walk us through all the dedications and the dedication of the roadway tract would be to the district.
Here's, Harry.
Yes, sir. No.
Here's what I want to know.
Yes, sir.
Seeing as we've had all of these things regarding the ponds and the pond erosion and that type of stuff, have we also incorporated the fact that there needs to be a gutters and downspouts on every house, home structure built and be that from those downspouts that if there happens to be a stormwater management pond behind, that it's required that there is underground piping that goes there because these are issues that previously constructed are going to have to deal with. And we had a big recommendation from the Ponds Group regarding that major cause of.
erosion.
So, the answer to your second part of your question is yes. There is a requirement in the current permit criteria manual that any surface waters flowing basically behind the homes have to collect to a central point and then go into the lake via piping. Can't just open sheet flow over the lake like it used to be allowed to do.
But again, well, you didn't answer all of it, which is, again, I'm going to be specific, that they require gutters and downspouts.
As far as gutters on the homes, no, there's nothing in the permit criteria manual that requires those. So, I don't know, and this is a question for Tony, I suppose. I don't know if we can require that.
I mean, if you don't have, you know, and that's been a major problem with the ponds group in various parts of the community, you see.
I will say that what you have currently in your permit criteria manual, what these construction plans show, is a million times better than, than what used to be.
Understand, but, but still.
As far as the gutters on homes?
That becomes, a guy has got a table, it's on Fifth Avenue, and he's got three walnut shells and a pea.
And they moved?
When are we going to, based upon this very strong recommendation from the ponds group, when are we going to go to the permit criteria manual and require gutters, downspouts, and connections to be on at some point? And if not, why not?
We can certainly look at making that change. It's not currently in there, but we can look at doing that.
Could we come up with a motion instantly?
Yeah, I, I think would be appropriate is if the board was to direct the staff to bring back for discussion review prior to any notice of any rule change, proposed language involving downspouts and gutters.
I'd, I'd, I'd like to ask David Caldwell a question. David, would you come to the podium for just one second?
Dave Caldwell, W C I.
Thank you. I don't want to bore people with, again, with how long I've lived in Pelican Preserve. But for years and years and years, every house, to my knowledge, had gutters and downspouts. Now, I have a prize of the fact that they don't necessarily, that it's an extra cost, cost option or something like that. Would you please straighten me out?
Chairman Guy, I wish I could actually answer your question. I'm not familiar enough with the construction standards. I know that some guttering on a home is done as part of the package, but I know it's not a hundred percent of the home. And that frequently residents choose that to be an option that they do after closing. I don't know the exact criteria for our home building, so you caught me off guard on that one.
I apologize for that. Could you find out for us?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Sir, John?
Yes.
Please come to the podium, John.
Hi, John Greger with the P P A C. I'd like to ask the question, is the gutters on the homes an option that is presented by the sales department at an extra cost?
I don't think, I thought we just answered, I thought we just answered.
No, well, then maybe, I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood the answer. He requested the existing criteria for building the home, not what the sales department recommends to the owner at an extra cost. There are always options.
Sure. And I do not know the answer. You know, yes, you're right, we have a long laundry list of options, of upgrades that residents can choose from. But I just don't know anything about as to the gutters and downspout question.
Well, could you, if you'd find that out, and together with, with the dollar amount on a typical home, that'd really be appreciated. Anything else for David?
What I'd like to, the board, we would have David go through, because this is, once again, because the flowway, the change in the flowway into the water management areas, I think, David, if you could articulate that, do you have the graphics to show that?
Sure.
And what's being requested as part of this plat? And David also sent out, was it today, David?
Yep.
Your last minute request?
So, that's not on the...
That's correct, for vacation of easements and whether the board wants to consider that today or placed on the next agenda, that might be appropriate.
Yeah, this is then strictly to do with the irrigation master being in turnover to, that's solely what this is.
That's, that's just an illustration of where the property, the development is located.
Correct.
Do you need any help, David, or?
See, as I only drive around in there once every week or ten days, I would think that something in here might look familiar, but there isn't anything in here that comes to my attention. Could you, could you kind of tell me where I am?
Very large dirt mound.
What a large dirt mound.
David, do you have a graphic you want to show?
Pelican Preserve, right where we're developing now, Mata Rita, Correna.
Right.
Prado is right there.
Okay, where I see, where I see the diagonal line where your finger is, put your finger back up there, please. Just to, just to the right a smidge.
The Kerry Jones, David? To the right, that diagonal line, that's the F P N L.
That's the F P N L.
That's where your thumbs are. Oh, 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 I'm sorry.
And this is Gateway Boulevard, is right there.
All right, I'm sorry.
So, Prado abuts that and the F P N L line, but doesn't connect to it.
Thank you.
So, Prado will be our next to last subdivision for Pelican Preserve. There's one more subdivision that's being prepared for review by the district. That will come later this year. What you have before you is Prado, it's a hundred and sixteen acres, three hundred and thirty-four single-family homes, four different single-family types, continuing what we generally build in Pelican Preserve. The plans and plat are what's on the agenda, I believe. Tetra Tech is comfortable with both the plat and the subdivision plans, that's for your consideration. What was part of the original submittal was because, and I'll come back to this, Matt, historically, there's a, this flowway that traverses the property, eventually goes out to the interstate area. And that flowway, which was dug decades ago, was part of a recorded easement that went to the district at the time it was constructed. Like a lot of things that were constructed decades ago, it's not exactly what we wanted to incorporate into the current design. So, we've made some, as we have in other subdivisions further to the west, we've made some slight modifications to the flowway to broaden it out, make it more like a lake-type structure. And in some, in some cases, we've found that the existing easements are not where they need to be. So, what we want to do is give the district new easements for whatever we're going to construct in the way of water management there. Some of those are by plat, in fact, all of them are by plat, except for one temporary easement, and I'll explain that in a moment. And then in return, the easements that are for the old flowway that we don't need, we're asking for the district to vacate those old easements. Now, all of that was part of your earlier submittal. What Tony didn't have for months and months and months was the actual legal documents that would be a recorded instrument. He just had our request that we wanted to do what I just outlined. So, what I gave to Tony today, and he has every right to be a little bit hesitant on saying they're fine or not fine, is, is the legal documents. I expect he'll do a thorough review along with your engineer. And any comments or whatever, we come back to us for correction. So, I just wanted to make it clear to Tony and the staff that any acceptance or consideration by the board is, does include these vacation of easements and these new grants of easement. But we're certainly understanding that they need to be reviewed and approved and come back to the board for signature.
Sounds like something needs to be tabled for the day, is that correct?
Well, I don't know that's tabled, it's up to you, your consideration.
You have it upside down.
It'll look good to David from his perspective.
Well, I'm looking like this. Perfectly fine. The top part of this, these are really the same, this shows before where it's the way it is in the legal documentation. And then the bottom one shows the way we like it. So, what I was saying was, here's the old flowway easement. We've come to the year, there's some old easements over at this one. The plat boundary is this heavy zigzag black mass. So, we need to take care of correcting old easements that have, were from decades ago to make them more habitable to what we need on the new plat. So, where the old flowway is here, connecting with the waterways over at Gateway. The new flowway would be broadened down, bigger than that, sort of, like Sanders did, do widening and narrowing. And then connecting over to the lake, so that we can...
You're not changing the direction of the, of the flow of water, are you?
No, 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 no. No. No, and this has all gone through your engineer for you. It's not, it's just, you know, for your meditations, unfortunately, there's some legal contracts that have to get repaired and assigned and submitted to the board.
Mr. Attorney, what is your pleasure?
I would, I know that they would like to have the plat approved today, but the plat approval is also contingent upon vacation of these various easements.
We also have to deliver to you a subdivision bond and a lot of related materials that the engineer has.
Yeah, I would suggest that this be continued to the next board meeting, so the board can also have the benefit of looking at the doc, the, you know, vacation documents, so that they would become part of the official record, the board after my review.
Is that okay with you?
Yes, I agree.
Is that okay with you?
It is, I have a question, David.
Yes.
That's okay with me, I'd like to ask David a question.
From what you've seen and heard, do you have any hesitation if we proceed without the...
Provided you get the gutters and downspouts, sure.
I'm going to do that. The attorney has recommended that we hold this off until the next meeting, so he can review the documents.
That's understandable, yeah.
Is that satisfactory with you?
Yeah.
Mr. Senior had a question.
Thanks, thank you for coming, David. On the map behind you, the, the purple area to the right that abuts Gateway Boulevard, further up, that, dear, I'm, I'm just recalling the public hearing that we had downtown some time ago, when there was a hundred and ninety-five acres in question, and who was going to supply the utilities, all that stuff, right?
Oh, okay.
I'm just wanting to know, is this, is this all part of that? Or what's, you say this is the second to the last development?
Uh, correct, let me point to the map.
I want to know what, how, how it goes on from here.
All, all of Prado and the, the last subdivision that will go into Pelican Preserve are part of the Gateway Services District Utility Franchise Area. So, all of Prado will receive potable water, sanitary sewer, and irrigation water from the district. What I guess Tyler brought up was that the only thing that's unique to Prado is that rather than have individual meters for all three hundred and thirty-four homes for irrigation, that'll be master metered at, at some point in the community. And then the distribution for the irrigation will be a homeowner association issue.
Just irrigation.
And, and so, the district will have one bill to send out to the association on that.
For irrigation.
Yeah. But the water and sewer will be individually metered like you'd do for any single-family home.
My question, thank you for that. The purple area, though, is, what's the last development, if this is the second to the last?
Uh, well, the last one is about how many units?
It's seventy-seven units.
Seventy-seven units, it's immediately below to the south of Prado, it's down in this zone.
Right.
And that'll be complete Pelican Preserve, yeah. It's shown, actually shown on that map.
Okay, got it. What, what's happening in the purple area that I was talking about, next to Gateway Boulevard, presumably where the construction entrance comes in, is that right?
Well...
Show me where the construction entrance comes in up, up, up Gateway Boulevard.
That'll continue for a short duration. Once we build out, once we really start to get built out in Prado, that'll be closed up, and there won't be a construction access anymore.
How, the, the other question I had is, how, is there only one exit for these people onto Tree Line, or are you considering an exit onto Gateway Boulevard at some point?
Oh, boy, that's a loaded question.
It's a simple question, really.
It's a very simple question, but it has, it has a long political answer.
If you'd rather not answer it, I'm okay with it.
A perfect, a well-thought-out plan.
No.
Yes, miss...
The answer's in the D R I.
Mr. Newbauer has answered the question.
Like Bill, I don't mean to put you on the spot, I just, I'm just interested.
No, it, unfortunately, it's been a long-drawn-out political issue with the city and the residents of Pelican Preserve, and it's official that there's only one access point, it's on Tree Line Avenue, and no connection in the gateway. Now, I, if your staff didn't say so, or it wasn't clear to you, some easement rights have been provided from Gateway Boulevard for district staff to get into the property of Prado and that part because of the utilities that they have to service. But that's only for the employees of the district.
David, I have one question that popped up as I was thinking about the vacation of drainage easement. Will additional, uh, developable parcels be created, or area be created by virtue of vacating part of the flowway and reconfiguring the water management area?
I'm sure there probably, it may be. I don't know if it's more or less acres, I haven't looked at it.
No problem.
Thank you.
We had, we had, where did we have, Hamlet's here, we had a major problem with a master, with a master metering system.
Was that Magnolia Lakes?
Yes.
With the irrigation?
We had a huge problem with that.
At the conversion, I think when we changed the rates, I think that was the issue at the time we switched.
Correct, and we then, foggy memory maybe, but I think we kind of went to, into a, a situation of, we'll never do a master meter again. We had, golly, I can't come up with what all that problem, it was a huge problem. I have no recollection. Huge problem.
My recollection was, it was more a matter of when we changed the rates, the unintended consequence of changing the rates was a substantial increase, unintended increase for master metered residential communities, I think. I think we addressed it. I think we had an interim solution, then we fixed it, but I can, that can be part of the continued review between now and the next board meeting.
Because Magnolia Lakes, I know, came in and there was a lot of...
I think, I think it was rectified at once, or maybe David knows.
I can't speak to that problem you mentioned. What I do know is...
You have other problems?
Yeah, you, I got some other problems. The, no, on the irrigation rates related to, as they are today, that the district has in place, and how it relates to our Prado subdivision, I ran it both ways, both individual cost and if it was individually metered and master metered. And your rate structure already reflects master metering in, for a, a community such as this, because you base your monthly minimums on the number of units. So, there's no real great advantage, I'll say, on, from a billing perspective, we practically pay the same thing for the same use of water, whether it's master metered or individual. It's just...
Then, then, he retorted, why then do you want to do it as a master metered thing strategically as compared to not?
The, it was a, a construction decision because the cost of the piping for, for a district-required system is a more stringent detail, it's a more costly system to install than it would be for a privately maintained or H O A maintained system.
So, you're circumnavigating our restrictions, is that what you're saying?
It's not, you know, it's a choice we have.
Circumnavigate is not necessarily a bad word, but it's...
Well, I, I understand, it's a choice that a developer or any builder would have, you know, whether wants to use one thing or another.
Okay. I'm still, I think when we had the Magnolia Lakes thing, golly, I can't remember, I think we came up to a... remember, I think we came up to a pretty strong conclusion that we weren't going to do that again, but I could be wrong, but I'm sure that Tony will delve into every detail.
I think, I think we addressed it, rectified it, the, uh, the time rate.
I'm sure you'll-
I could be wrong, but I'll double-check that.
No problem. May, may we dismiss, David?
Yeah.
I'm dismissed?
Thank you, you are dismissed. Take your problems with you.
Take my problems with me.
Thank you, David. Well, district manager?
I have nothing, sir.
Uh, Pam?
I have nothing.
Ron?
And we're on, uh, on, on, uh, we-
Yes, I do.
Yes, you do.
Uh, I had something to update you on with respect to David Ramber's activities in Tallahassee.
Oh.
Um, the, uh, this is with respect to our lobbyist, who is trying to get us some money out of the state government to help us with our, um, pond bank restoration projects. Um, the legislature got, I'm, I'm not going to read the entire document, but I'll send you all, I'll send it to Cal via the email I just received. Uh, Florida legislature got off to a solid, agreeable start in this opening week of the two thousand and sixteen session. Both chambers swiftly approved the top issues sought by leaders of the House and the Senate. To date, there is five hundred million dollars in water project funding requests, and the houses sta-, the House is starting to organize requests by county and special district and prioritize accordingly. The Senate heard presentations on projects in December, but has not started its official review of projects. Last year, seventy-three million dollars in projects was actually funded. Um, the, the individuals in particular that David Ramber is working with is our, um, is our Senator, uh, Senator Bernicisto and Representative Matt Caldwell. They're the two, and particularly Matt Caldwell, who has a specific interest in Estero Bay Aquatic Preserve, and I, and Tyler, uh, also has been very involved in feeding, um, David Ramber's organization with some really good information, and has helped them a lot, thanks, Tyler, for that. Uh, and, and, um, uh, Sue Mullins and David Ramber and, and others in their team have sat down with Caldwell more than once, and are pleading our case, and they think we've got a decent chance of getting some money, although it's too early to commit, because Caldwell himself is really interested in that particular part of the coastline, that we, uh, there's our ultimate egress is the Estero Bay. That's as much as I can report.
Thank you, sir. Gary?
Get the gutters and downspouts.
I'm going to work on it. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, we're about ready to adjourn, but I, I couldn't adjourn the meeting without, uh, thanking Scott Connell for the work that he's done, uh, for our CDT, and I wish him well.
Thanks, David.
He's got another meeting yet, he's got another shot at him.
Yes, and on that second meeting, I'd like to add, um, can we try and, at least while Scott's here, because I've been working with Scott quite a bit on the pool, put the commons pool heating options, can we put that on the agenda, please, for next meeting, while Scott's around, so we can at least update the board where we are?
Okay. Glad you brought, uh, brought that to my attention, that he'll be around for another meeting, so, but I could have forgotten, that's why I wanted to do it now. But I haven't forgotten the letter that I was supposed to sign to go to the airport to ask them about their direction, and you were going to pr- uh, provide a letter for my signature, and I haven't seen it.
Actually, yeah, actually, uh, when, okay, I was going to sign, I'll, I'll change the name and send it over to you.
Oh, whose name is you're going to put on?
I should have put my name on.
Okay, you put your name on it, but just do it, okay?
Put Dan's. Uh, I, you might have more impact if you, you know, I'll, I'll send it over.
All right, please do. Ladies and gentlemen, we're about to adjourn. I thank you for all of your good work today, I, uh, I had, I had some reservations about how this all might go, uh, but I'm just delighted that we're following through and putting together our most important, uh, things, and, uh, I'm sure we'll be spending some more time on it in the near future. We are adjourned.
I love these names, Tistoria, I can't even find them. I give them in my office, I don't-